The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office, (920) 967-3608. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alderman Taylor?
Just like on the eve of the 80th anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor, I would like to take a moment of silence for the men and women that lost their life in that war. Excuse me. And most notably Lieutenant Philip Kosecki from Manassia, who lost his life in the first moments of the Pearl Harbor attack. He was a young lieutenant on the USS Arizona. And the Kosecki family lived on the southwest corner of First and Appleton Street in the city of Manassia here. So just a moment of silence for all of them. Thank you.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Repella?
Yeah.
Alderman Nichols?
Yeah.
Alderman Taylor?
Yeah.
Alderman Sevenik?
Yeah.
Alderman Langdon?
Yeah.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yeah.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Yeah.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Yeah.
All are present.
Our first time on the agenda this evening is the reported department officers, department heads, staff, and consultants. And we'd like to take a moment just to share with you the results of Gather Around the Christmas Tree. Alderman Grady, did you want to?
Well, I was kind of going to say, thank you, Mayor. I was going to say the same thing. I didn't want to go through all the slides, but for a first-time event, which will hopefully be annual in the city of Manassia, we had a tremendous turnout and everything went fairly smoothly. And great job by all departments and people with the committee for lighting up Manassia. Onto Phase Two.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Randy.
The first item then is the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, congratulations to the whole community for this wonderful event that we had, especially to Alderman Randy Repella and Tom Grady for all their hard work. It was almost becoming a daily thing for them, and a lot of people don't realize what goes behind the scenes.
That was Tom Glickup calling at 8:00.
Yeah. So anyways, with that, Mayor, I know everyone here on the council is very appreciative of the committee and their work, and it was a fantastic event. So compared to last year, unbelievable. So with that, Mayor, move to receive Minutes A through H and Communications I through M.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Did you have discussion standing as well?
I'm sorry, I just got the laptop.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I was looking in the minutes here with the Health Department, and certainly we're experiencing an extremely high level of the transmission of COVID. And reading further, I noticed that 54.5% of the city of Manassia is fully vaccinated. And I was thinking, it's really not very good with the amount of time that we've had. But it kind of slices down the political sentiment in the country too at 50-some percent. But I'm wondering how we could possibly have a campaign or something to maybe try to invigorate and help the community in some sort of a positive campaign to get vaccinated. That might be having a banner over the Racine Street and having the different signs as other agencies do with the thermometer with the goal and as we climb up, the thermometer now at almost 55% vaccinated and kind of have a public campaign with the city to see if we can get more people vaccinated. And I was going to ask Director Hutter if she has seen anything like that out there in other communities, or especially that we have the funds available through the federal dollars that we could use to do some sort of a rally campaign for us. Director Hutter, are you aware of anything like that?
Yeah, thanks, Alderman Taylor. We are aware of certainly national and statewide vaccination campaigns that are quite, you know, quite public and push out a lot of information. Local public campaigns, not quite as familiar with what's going on, but certainly we can do some research into that. I did have one of our staff members look into some things today, and I think she noted some examples in, for example, the city of DePere with banners and public messaging and things like that. So there are some examples that we can take a look at and see if anything might fit well for our city in promoting vaccination rates.
Good, thank you. We certainly have the, and in your findings here, we certainly have the demographics who are vaccinated and who aren't. And now with the schools with the five and up are being vaccinated now, there could be something too that we could work with that. But I think there should be some sort of a marketing campaign put together with some people, some heads that would look into this. And, you know, I always think Joe Weider, he helped us with everything, but there's a lot of other talented people in the community here too that, Mayor, I think we could get some sort of a program going. Thank you, Director Hutter. Second, I had the Fire Department. I noticed that in the minutes here, Chief Cohen noted that he's working with the Public Works Departments regarding the increased gas leaks due to the current fiber optics that TDS is installing in here in Manassia. Chief, do you have any type of update for us on that?
Thank you, Alderman Taylor. I've talked to Laura and Cory, and I've talked to Public Works at the city of Nina also. So I know the big question was liability and what's being done to prevent as many gas leaks as we had. So what happens is when TDS came in, and I think they just kind of came in and started doing some work, and two cities had to do a little catch-up as to the permitting process. So when they come in, they do have to take out a permit, and they have zones laid out in each city as to which area they're working in. And one of the issues is they have many different contractors working on doing the boring, and one group does it a little differently than the other. And so I think the two cities got a pretty good hand on keeping track of what they're doing as best as they can, where City of Nina has a representative from Public Works actually goes along when they're doing their certain areas where they're doing some digging. I know I talked to Cory and Laura, and sometimes that isn't always possible here as well, but they still have a good idea of what area they're working in. They're checking on them as they're doing it. And so TDS has to have locates done, so they have to have certain locates done in the, with certain areas. And then they use USIC, I believe, is the company that does the gas and electric locates. So liability falls on if somebody hits something, they go back to whoever didn't locate right or whoever didn't do the correct marking. So that is the liability on that end. So I did talk to a rep from WE Energies. The rep said they do get fined for, and depending on how many issues they have, the fines continue to increase. So that's about as far as I got, because not everybody wants to return your phone call and say, hey, it's our fault, or we didn't do this. And so I had to do a lot of digging, but that's pretty much where we're at. And I have to say, like, over the last two to three weeks, I don't think we've responded to any gas leaks caused by TDS. So.
I was wondering, you know, when they're in that area, does somebody know where the shut-off valve? Because I remember when we did 114 on Tackle Street, and it was over 20 minutes before someone could find the shut-off at one point, and it was a very large main they hit. So I'm wondering, when WE Energies is in the field with them and other people, do they know exactly where that is, and is there a wrench on it, or what is the procedure for that?
So WE Energies is not typically with them. There are instances where they are with them. Typically, it's high pressure. I know they've been around when we're around like eight-inch mains and things of that nature. They have reps on-site when you're digging in those areas. But just standard, what I would consider a standard main, they don't have reps on-site. You know, it just wouldn't be cost-effective in that situation.
I was just, you know, you worry about a business explosion or a house explosion, and, you know, it happened out on One Night Street in the city of Manassia one time too. So I appreciate it, Chief, and keep us updated with that. And, you know, if it continues, you just have to take more extreme measures and have a sit-down with the proper people, and, you know, we don't want any loss of life with this project. So thank you.
So what we have done, Alderman Taylor, to comment to that, is we've worked with them, depending on the severity of different things that they're doing and not following directions and utility hits and things of that nature, we've kind of gone to the three strikes and you're out type situation. Obviously, if there was something really significant, they're going to hit gas mains, I understand that, you know, we're going to, that's a significant hit. But it happens. It's inevitable. You don't want to see it happen, but it's not acceptable, but it is inevitable. It's going to be, something's going to get hit throughout the course of this project. But we have removed contractors because of poor work.
I think the last meeting, when I brought this up, the chief had noted that there was quite a few different gas mains that break, getting broken. I think you were maybe off on vacation on deer hunting or something, so this is where this came from, and just wanted to make sure that we were ahead of the curve on this and making sure nothing bad happens. Chief, on the fire truck, will we see any type of?
That would be further in the agendas. Alderman Taylor? There's an item on the agenda further on in that one.
I can't hear you, Mayor.
There's an agenda item further down the agenda for that one.
Okay. And let's see. Just wanted to thank the mayor for pursuing our broadcasting, and we couldn't get that time any closer, Mayor, than 8 o'clock was the soonest.
That was when they had an opening. They had some other programming that was on earlier than 8 o'clock.
Okay. Well, thank you for getting that and following up on that. And one other one was, Sam, thanks for all your hard work with this public's property, and hopefully December 13th will be a day where we can push this over the gold line. So thanks for all your hard work on that. It seems like it gets thicker and thicker, the pages, as this moves forward. So hopefully, we're at, going to go over the gold line. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Hutter, the COVID situation has changed a lot over the last few weeks. Could you provide a brief update on where we're at in the city of Manassia?
We have that in our packet.
Yes, I would be happy to. Okay, so you are right, Alderman Nichols. The situation is a little bit different now. Over the past three or four weeks here, our number of cases have pretty dramatically increased, especially as compared to those low levels that we saw in the summer. So really attributing that to that Delta variant that is still predominantly circulating in our area. These are our most recent case counts. You can find this on our website, and we update this every morning, Monday through And then we also post a weekly data summary that includes data for a two-week period. The most recent two-week period ended last Monday, 11:30. And in that report, we reported 173 cases. That was an increase from the previous week and puts us in the very high burden and activity level with a case rate of 955.1, which is very close to that critically high level, the red range. Do you have a? Oh, I'm sorry. Slide is the word I'm looking for. Thank you. There we go. 955.1 as a case rate, like I said, close to that critically high range in the red. So what that tells us is there is a lot of disease spread right now. This is that information shown graphically, so you can see we're over here on this top right, very, very high there. Just a simple age range breakdown. You can see cases are scattered across all ages. Luckily, fewer as age increases. That's a little different than it was in the beginning of the pandemic, but not good to see so many cases in our younger kids either. So we're definitely seeing more cases in younger age groups than we did a year ago. Children tend to have less severe disease. However, they also can take it home and spread it to whoever's in the home with them, whoever's within their networks. Just a few other metrics here. Those three red ones at the top there are really just telling us again, there's high transmission in our area, lots of disease circulating. And then the three at the bottom, those hospital capacity metrics, again, are telling us how many beds are full right now. And we have over 95% inpatient beds occupied, over 94% of ICU beds occupied, and almost 18% of those beds are occupied with COVID patients. In the Fox Valley region, we have 13 hospitals, and in those 13 hospitals, there's 117 COVID-19 inpatients. And of those 117, 26 are in the ICU and 10 are on ventilators. Just putting out here for the community where individuals can get tested for COVID-19, there's two newer sites added here, Summit Clinical Laboratories in Oshkosh and a COVID clinic in Grand Shute that's near the mall. We did make a note that some fees may apply for those testing sites. The others should be at no cost. These are the Theta Care mobile testing sites in our area is across the top. So Monday, Tuesday, we have testing at Christ the Rock Church in Manassia. And Wednesday through Friday, there is testing at the Guardian Building on the northern side of Appleton. Theta Care Mobile does antigen testing and PCR testing. And then I just wanted to highlight that Omicron variant. I'm sure individuals have heard this in the news. So it is a point of concern, but you've probably heard, also not a point of panic right now. So this is a synopsis of what we know. This variant was identified in South Africa. It has now spread to many countries across the world. At this time, we know of one case in the state of Wisconsin, and that person had recently traveled to South Africa. However, there is evidence of community transmission in the United States and, you know, in other states. And that means that people have contracted the virus even though they have not traveled to South Africa, so they got it locally. We do not yet have enough data to know whether the Omicron variant can outcompete the Delta variant. And then, like I said, it is a variant of concern, but due to the small number of cases, we don't really know yet the severity of illness or death associated with it. However, as a variant of concern, there's three things that it can be associated with, the first one being increased transmissibility. And this is where we do have some preliminary evidence coming from South Africa that it is a very transmissible variant and may be associated with a high rate of reinfections. So it is affecting individuals who have previously been infected with COVID-19. Those other two points that we are not quite sure about is whether it can cause more severe illness or is resistant to our diagnostics, our treatments, or our vaccinations. Right now, our health officials are telling us that vaccines do remain the best public health measure to protect people from COVID-19, including all the variants that we know about right now, and in order to slow transmission and reduce the likelihood of new variants emerging, and then certainly to prevent severe illness, hospitalizations, and death. An update really quickly here on vaccination. So just a reminder that boosters are recommended for all adults age 18 and over. You just have to make sure that it's been at least six months after your second dose of Pfizer Moderna, or at least two months after you received the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And children are eligible to receive the Pfizer pediatric vaccine, so those five to 11-year-olds can go and get the vaccine as well. This was, this data here was updated in the middle of November. It tells us the comparison of cases, hospitalizations, and deaths between individuals who are fully vaccinated and not fully vaccinated. So you can see that the rate of cases among not fully vaccinated people is five times higher than the rate of cases among fully vaccinated people, and then so on, for 11 times higher for hospitalizations and 15 times higher for death. And then here, you can see the snapshot for the state of Wisconsin, 59.1% of state residents have received at least one dose of the vaccine. For the city of Manassia, as of December 3rd, 57% have received at least one dose and 54.6% have been fully vaccinated, meaning they have received both doses of Pfizer Moderna or have received the single dose Johnson &amp; Johnson, and it's been two weeks after. So just putting up here options where individuals can find the vaccine. One good option to point out here that has some Saturday availability is the Fox River Mall, location near Shields. Outagamy County Public Health, in conjunction with a contractor, is running that site. Our Health Department does have clinics on Wednesdays. There is really high demand for booster doses right now, so our appointments have been filling very quickly. So individuals may need to look at some other options, so these are great options for those Alderman Nichols? Is the, thank you for that. Is the state tracking the number of people who receive their boosters as well out of those people who are vaccinated? The state does have information about booster doses administered on their DHS webpage. Yes, they have some information, yeah. Okay. And I think Winnebago County has a website dedicated to finding a vaccine of your choice countywide. Yes. So individuals can go to vaccines.gov. That gives information about what vaccines may be in stock at local vaccinators. It should be pretty encompassing for all the local vaccinators. That is a requirement for us to have our information up there. And then, yes, Winnebago County does have a local site that individuals can look at. I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure what the name of their webpage is right now, but Winnebago County Public Health Department COVID-19 vaccine would get you there. And they do keep a comprehensive list of vaccinators in Winnebago County and which vaccine they are administering. Yes. Thank you for that. And thank you also for the very hospitable kids vaccination hours clinics that you're hosting as a department. They are comfortable and engaging and really easy for kids and families to come into and not feel intimidated. So thank you for that. Thank you. We appreciate that feedback.
Alderman Sevenik?
I wanted to discuss Communication M, the Fox Crossing. I know James brought it up a little bit, but there, since then, we've had another meeting, and we've had some revisions. As you know, the Fox Crossing during their closed session did not have a full body, so they really didn't want to take any action. And so after our budget process, mostly recall, we did something with Airport Road. They contacted us back, wanted to renegotiate, which we did. They will be meeting December 13th with the revised boundary agreement, and it'll be coming back to us. So what we have now before us isn't necessarily the agreement. We just made some minor tweaks to it, so it will be updated. And of course, then it has, once it goes to them, and if they approve it, it has to come back to us for approval. And then again, there's a, I believe, a public hearing that's needed, like a minimum of 30 days or something like that. So what we have in our packet, we can ignore for now.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item F is public comments, and there is no one from the public here this evening. Item G is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have items separated? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to have items three, four, five, and eight separated.
Seeing nothing else, if there's a motion for the remainder, Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we approve the Common Council Minutes of 11:15:21. The Budget Review Session Minutes of 11:321, 11:04:21, 11:10:21, 11:11:21.
Second. There's two more than two, right?
Yeah, I'm going to take those up.
Oh, yeah, okay. Sorry, I didn't.
I just thought we'd do the minutes first and then...
So you want to take all the?
I'll do all of them.
But either you have to take all four of them together or separately.
And then also the Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue Personnel Recommendations. Item Six, filling the Assistant Fire Chief Prevention Marshall Position and filling the two firefighters' positions. And the third entry level, firefighters no earlier than March 1st of 2022.
So motion, a second. If we could have a roll call vote, please. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Do we have a motion for item number three? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to accept the payment to IEI General Contactors, Inc., contract unit number 2021-05. That's for the public protection facility shower rooms remodel at the fire department, Station 35, and the police department in the amount of $85,985. That's payment number one and final.
So motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Do we have a motion for item four?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Make the motion to accept the payment to MJI Building Services, contract unit number 2021-08. That's for the public works facility cold storage in the amount of $146,632.50. Payment number one.
So motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Do we have a motion for item five?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to accept the payment for the street use application for the 29th Annual First Eve Celebration to be held on Friday, December 31st, 2021, from 11:00 PM to 12:30 AM, hosted by Community Forward, Inc. And Alderman Taylor's help with that also, thank you.
So note, this is slightly different than what was on the agenda at the last meeting.
Correct.
Discussion. Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, I was gonna abstain on this.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Based on what was in our packet, I'm a little unclear as to whether or not Milwaukee Street is still included in the closure.
The chief is nodding his head. So from what, from the map that's in the packet, it is basically Milwaukee Street from the alley up to Main Street, and then Main Street from Chute Street up to Mill Street. Correct?
I'm seeing what happened on my end. So, and then from at Racine at Broad Street is also...
And that area will be partially closed so that people who live in Marina Place still have access to their posing at that point. So the red lines are barricades, I believe, and the blue boxes are blocking vehicles to make sure that people couldn't get past those barricades.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
I'm just glad the chief is nodding his head yes as I'm saying this. I was not at that meeting.
There are seven minutes.
Yeah.
No.
Was there not a second?
No.
Okay, then there's a second.
I have a question, Mayor.
Alderman Sevenek.
I see that there are barricades over at the former Bonta corporate office parking lot. Is that meaning that no one's going to be allowed to park there?
I was not at that meeting, so now I can't answer that. Chief, can you answer that one for us?
Trying to see where you're talking about, because I'm not seeing it on...
Yeah, there's red lines going across each of the entrances.
Oh, on Faith's Building, not Bonta. Because there was a discussion at the meeting as well as about Bonta's lot on the other side of the water where the fireworks are being shot.
I said the former corporate Bonta. McLone.
Yeah.
Faith Technology.
Yep, the ones I know. Yeah, so what the plan is on that is just that parking lot is not utilized for the event itself, because when the crowd, in essence, what happens is just before midnight, the vehicles and the barricades, which are just west of Mill Street, actually will move to the east side of Mill Street, because the crowd goes from the square down to the terminus at the end of Mill Street to watch the fireworks.
Okay.
So vehicles are allowed to park in that parking lot, which happened a couple of years ago. It, it's not a good situation, because people then jump in their cars and try driving out through the crowd. So we discourage and we block off that parking lot, so it's not utilized.
I mean, what would you be doing if people just start going in there and parking?
That's why it's blocked off.
Okay.
I mean, if, if cars would squeak around or go around, so be it.
Yeah.
But then we would just try to not have them leave until the crowd disperses from those streets itself.
That's what I would, that's where I was going.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Okay, seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
It's not working?
It's not working? Oh, there it goes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
And then we also have item eight. Do we have a motion for that? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the purchase of a new fire engine with related equipment not to exceed 675,000 prior to February 1st, 2022, to avoid the price increase and authorize both finance directors reviewing financial options and approve the most advantageous finance option for both cities.
So motion, a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief in here, it says that there's a price increase that's coming, and that's why they want to order the truck. But do we look at some bids on, on other trucks? I haven't just seen the total amount here.
Yeah.
Are we gonna see that?
So we did not, we didn't, the last time that we went out, we did, got bids from one other manufacturer, I think it was for Engine 36, which is two years old. And the only company that sent a bid back was from Clintonville, and it was about 60,000 more than what, what our Pierce engine was for. And when we didn't accept their bid, they, they made it known they probably weren't gonna ever submit another, another bid. So the other nearest companies are on the west side of Wisconsin and I think down by Milwaukee that would be able to put a truck together that we're looking for. So we did not, and we did have a little bit of a discussion on this at our committee meeting. Being that all our fleet are Pierce, we felt it was, not that we couldn't go out for bid, but we thought with having our mechanic certified in all those, in the vehicles that we do have, and then bringing in a different manufacturer, we would have to send mechanics through some of the recertifications. And then we also looked at if one of those apparatus needs to be repaired, where we would have to send it. So currently, it's very rare that we have to send it to somewhere outside of the valley currently. And so we just looked at that, like having an engine out of service more than a day is not good for us. So typically, if we have to send it out to get some alignment done or something with brakes, that's usually a one day there and back, and we have it back. So we were just trying to consider some of the other things that we are fortunate, and parts, you know, if our mechanics are looking at parts, usually one of those chiefs will run to Appleton and grab a part, and we have it there that same day versus somebody that who knows where we would get the part from or how long it would take. So a lot of those factors went into consideration, and we did discuss a little bit at the committee level.
Doesn't that put us in a position that the local supplier knows that we're just gonna buy from them and we're not, you're gonna have a competitive bidding process on it?
It, very possible.
I mean, that's why we have trucks in reserve. So if a truck needs a part or something, that, you know, we keep these trucks for that reason. And, you know, you can have anything shipped to you within a day or half a day. So I don't know, I just think it's a, it's a good policy for a big-ticket item and, but maybe the other companies think that all their work is gonna be for naught. And I just, I'm just not comfortable with that situation, especially with the money we spend and with the history we've had. And I haven't seen any concession from this company that said, yeah, you had a bad batch of bad steel, and because of that, your truck's failing earlier, and we can do this for you or that for you. And same with the electrical problems we had, we didn't see any concessions on that. So I think it puts us in a position with this company that no matter what, they're gonna buy from us. So they get a bad truck, they get some bad wiring, bad steel, so what? They're gonna buy from us anyways. That's just the message I think that puts out there. Certainly if I, if it was my own personal vehicle or something like that. And Wisconsin has such a vast amount of excellent fire trucks out there. And I don't know how much work our certified mechanics do, but the city of Manasha and the city of Nida have actual certified mechanics in, in the whole field on trucks. So I don't know how much training is involved. I'd like to see that sometime, see what, 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 what our people are trained to do and not to do. So, but I, I think it just puts a, a message out to a, a local supplier that no matter what, they're gonna buy from us, and no matter what happens to the vehicle, they're gonna still keep buying from us. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenek?
As chairman of that committee, we did discuss some of these details. And well, fortunately for our community, Pierce is the best fire truck that's made in the United States. So as far as failings we've had, if anything, any vehicle is gonna have some type of issue, and that's not a failing. It's just, those things happen. And, you know, we, we need to start supporting our local communities. And the Fox Valley, I mean, I think we're just so fortunate to have the best company probably in the world for firefighting purposes. And the chief makes a very good point. If there's a part or something, we can have it in minutes. We don't have to have it shipped to us. And you know how shipping is right now. We might get it in three weeks or something like that. We, I mean, it's also all about service. And Pierce has brought to our communities the best service possible. So I think, although I don't disagree with the philosophy of what James is saying about getting a better bid, there just isn't a better fire truck, and there isn't a better service out there. So I'm 100% for this.
Alderman Taylor?
I would like to see a document on my desk that said this is the best company in the United States. I've never seen that. I think it's, I think it's hearsay, and I would like to see that, because the other companies in Wisconsin are just as, just as good at building fire apparatus. And I think the points that were made are very weak, and that's why we have reserve trucks. And I would just like to see that document that says, here's everybody else, here we are here. So I challenge you to show us a document on that. Thank you.
And one way I can challenge you, Alderman Taylor, is how the vote goes tonight.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Fire truck. Oh, you have the wrong one up there. If you want to clear that one out and put the right one up there.
You didn't have...
We already did that one. There it is. Okay, moving on to action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for November 12th through 12, December 2nd. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of November 12th through December 2nd, 2021, in the amount of $1,386,601.85.
So motion, a second. Is there discussion? Do you have discussion? Alderman Nichols? Alderman Guardi?
Thank you. I don't have a discussion, but I just want to abstain from check number 73214. The reimbursement for the holiday lighting budget for $44.50 for elf outfits and $5,000 from the Strong Neighborhoods curb appeal.
Okay, so... So, yep, the 40, the $44 was donations. So we are, is there other discussion? Seeing none, so we're taking a vote on the accounts payable and payroll excluding check three, 73214. If we could have a roll call vote on that, please.
Hmm. That's weird. There we go. Hmm. There we go. Yep.
Looks like there's a little lag.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Okay, and then if we could have a vote on check 73214? We can make us another roll call, please. There it is.
Tom, that's $44 you have spent.
And is yours not working?
Nope. It's not doing anything.
There it goes.
Motion carries seven, zero. Alderman Tom Guardi abstained.
Item two is the beverage operators licenses. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2021 through 2023 licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated December 5th, 2021.
So motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
And being that there's no other business this evening and no members of the public, I would accept a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manasha with video recordings of city meetings. Manasha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www.cityofmanasha-wy.gov. To express opinions about city of Manasha issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.